Education meeting, we are calling the meeting to order and it is seven ten P M. And if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of the act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll call.
Sure, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
We have gone, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, I need a motion, please, to approve our minutes from our May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Boone.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Prizella. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our superintendent's report by Ms. Diane Di Giuseppe.
Good evening. So we talked a little bit about high-impact tutoring last week that it was going to start. It has started. Started on Monday. Our tutors and our students are reporting positive experience so far. I do want to just go over with the board some things that are may change in the initial from the original plan. So we started with grade four. Obviously, we know that the state dragged their feet, right? They were supposed to tell us in October. Then our initial grant was not approved. We had to resubmit the grant. We resubmitted the grant. It was approved. And then they said it was approved, but hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We gave us a verbal approval. They would not give us a writing, an approval in writing. And it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, right? So we didn't want to start the program until we got a written approval from the state. And we did last week, which is why we were able to move right into it on Monday. We chose to start with grade four because they're going to age out at the end of the summer. So getting as many students within grade four now, because as of August, they are no longer allowable under the terms of the grant. So we had slated grade three to begin in the summer and go summer through probably around the winter break. However, we're struggling to find the students that are available, the students that would benefit from the tutoring that are available because of summer commitment. So they're looking to see if we need to extend that and not do tutoring over the summer and do it before or after school in September. Because we want the students that are most that will be most impacted from the grant to actually receive those services. So when when a student generally refuses an opportunity like this, we go to the next person on the list. But we're having a good number of students that are just not available because of pre-existing summer plans or camp plans. So we're going to reevaluate whether or not we're going to start in the summer. And that will be done, obviously, in the next week or two. So last evening, I attended, well, Mrs. Prisco and I attended a really lovely tribute to three of our retiring teachers, Mrs. Linda Barone, Mrs. Maria Meyer, and Mr. Tom White, who collectively have more than ninety-five years of really quality teaching. It was a really nice event, except for the part where Mrs. Prisco and my graduate high school graduation picture went up on a screen. You never want that. But it really was a very lovely event, a testament to these three teachers' service to the district. And I think the next one is from Mr. Morton, who last night I unfortunately had to choose between honoring these three teachers or going to his last official concert. But I heard the concert was wonderful and yeah, great, good to hear. It's amazing to see, and I believe it was elementary, middle, and high school together in one concert. It was a half an hour show. And we had approximately eight hundred and fifty people in our gymnasium at the high school last night honoring Mr. Morton and celebrating our students across the district. So but he will also be having a retirement dinner as well. So we had some fourth grade, fourth graders walked over to H B W today for tours. They were from Brookdale Avenue School and Forest Avenue School. We are in the middle of conducting math testing at H B W. And just to give a quick staffing update, the tenure, the new tenure track position that we spoke about at last meeting, we are, we've accepted applications all week and they're going to begin interviewing. The, we did hire the art, the registered behavioral technician. We are still in discussion with a replacement gifted and talented teacher, K five. We are interviewing for the special education leave replacement at H B W. We are now, we've gone from accepting applications to interviewing the instrumental teacher at H B W because Mr. Halpern will be taking Mr. Morton's spot at the elementary level. And at the middle school, we had Mrs. Ackerman and Mrs. Kohler and Mrs. Simmons have been really working at trying to create the special education schedule. When you schedule, you always start with special ed because it's the hardest schedule to do. And as a result of special education law and limits on the number of students that can be placed in an in-class support setting, you often wind up with more sections than you would if you didn't have, you didn't need in-class resource or in-class, they call it I C I here, but it's generally known as in-class resource. As a result, we had nine sections extra in special education, primarily in social studies and science for in-class support. And that equates to a teacher and a half. So what we're going to do, and Mr. Cruz and I discussed the finance and the impact of that. We need to advertise for a full-time special education teacher at H B W, and we'll cover the other sections as six-period sections. Trying to cover nine or eight or nine sections as six-period would be really hard and not great for our kids. It's difficult when you have an extra period and you're trying to juggle. And so we'll be hiring another special ed teacher at H B W, so we're accepting applications for that. At the high school, I am very happy to let you know that we found a special education math teacher. Really enjoyed the interview with him, and I believe he's on the agenda this evening. I'm sure Connie put his information out to you in the in the board packet. We also hired an A P Environmental Science Biology teacher who happens to be a former Verona High School graduate and very, very eager to return to her alma mater as a teacher. We are still accepting applications for the Spanish leave replacement. We are still trying to find a part-time substance abuse or student assistance coordinator and still accepting applications for the anticipated physical education teacher. So last meeting, we had a question about Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law is was passed in late twenty nineteen regarding the requirement of school districts to do age-appropriate instruction on what is sexual assault and, you know, stranger danger, all the way up through human trafficking. So the state, the way the law is written is that it charges the commissioner of education to provide to school districts guidance, which we got this year. So we, I attended a roundtable today and we had a presentation from a company that had some, has really good resources. And they're free and they're quality. So over the summer now, we have three sets of resources that we're going to be reviewing. And Mrs. Paul Marisi and the P and the P and Health Teachers, we'll go through and see which one is the best fit for our needs. But it was interesting that we had a question about that at our last meeting, and they're kind of coming out of the woodwork as the state just released the guidance, all these programs. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Quick question. Is it Aaron's Law? I just want to.
Aaron.
Aaron. E R I F. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, to our business administrator report, Mr. Cruz.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. In finance this month, there are a few resolutions in tonight's agenda. And the first one that I just wanted to point out is the twenty-four, twenty-five renewal of our food service manager vendor, Pomtonian, along with the twenty-four, twenty-five meal price list. Another piece that I want to point out is that we are going to have a request for proposal, an R F P, later in the fall, hopefully before the spring. Because at this point, we're, this is the last year of that current agreement with Pomtonian. So at that point, we will evaluate also whether or not where our numbers with free reduced lunch, students and the participation in the fall, and also to be, to better assess which food provider will be a better fit for Verona going forward in year twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond. The other renewals that we have there is also our twenty-four, twenty-five health benefits with Brown and Brown, the health benefit provider, which is AmeriHealth, and for our dental benefits is Delta Dental. And lastly, resolution E nine, I just wanted to highlight, this is a R F P that we will, that will be facilitated by the Hunterdon County Educational Service Commission, also known as the Hunterdon Co-op. The, one of the things that we do is on a three-to-four-year cycle is lease financing. This is something that's already planned. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A big portion of that, about two hundred and fourteen thousand, is for new I T hardware servers along with I T services that goes with that. And right now, that's to replace an aging service system that we have, it's about eight years old. One thing that I want to point out, as we mentioned in previous board meetings, these new servers will also allow enhanced surveillance capacity where where we will be able to store up to ninety days of active footage and additional security enhancement in the I T space. So as mentioned, this is something that was already previously planned. And the last thirty-five thousand of that will be allocated to replace a two thousand and seven Ford cargo van in our maintenance department, which is in really poor condition. And it will be, the proposal is to replace it with a new twenty, twenty-two-three Chevy cargo van. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Cruz?
I'm sorry. I'll be quick. Sorry. Thank you, because I did have a question on E nine, but you're so glad you got to it. When we, for the Pomtonian, is my school bus then, is that through Pomtonian, or is that something that we outsourced?
So it's an independent vendor as a point-of-sale transaction platform. So we do utilize in our agreement with Pomtonian, they manage it for us, but it's a platform that we get to say, which is the parent company for my school bus is Heartland.
Okay. So so there are other vendors that we could use for?
We could definitely switch that at any point.
Need an R F P as well, or no, because the cost of it is so minimal?
Yes, we, if that's something that we want to look at, and especially now in the summer before the start of the school year. If there are, I think last year we started looking at other third-party providers in that space, and there are a few options besides my school bus, which probably will be a better cost for for parents.
Yeah, because it seems like they increase the price of it. And also, the service fee is much higher. And I don't think this isn't, this is not a, I'm not sure, when, I don't know if you even have the answer to this, but when the, when the kids are on lunch line and they put their codes in, that goes directly into my school box? Right, is that where?
So it gets subtracted.
The kid, like to see the, is that what that platform would do? Whereas like if a student is trying to buy lunch, then it's kind of confirms that it is in fact that child that is buying that lunch? Is that through my school box?
That is, that is the point-of-sale transaction system. I believe right now they just use like a code. So a student has to punch in their, their code in order to confirm their account.
So if a student gives their code to someone else?
Or if someone else just has?
Just hat, yeah.
Because it's a big problem, I believe. And I'm wondering if there's a platform that we're kind of looking into, if there's one that could also offer some type of, I don't even know if it exists, but something where?
Kind of like a check and balance, just to ensure that if it actually brings up the student's I D to confirm that this is actually?
That it's that child.
Yeah, so we could definitely look at that and make that switch over the summer. That's something that.
Why did they go from swipe cards to an actual code that can be seen as you're doing it? You probably weren't here when that happened.
No.
Yeah, I wasn't either.
I could ask.
It's a lot. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one, one quick question. Jorge, I'm static about the finding of the deal that we got on that, that truck. So good work. I, but I do have a general question. As our fleet or the vehicles we use do age out and we have to replace, do we, at what point do we start looking at E V opportunities? And are there any federal tax credits? I'm sure in this situation, it just would not have been cost-effective. But is there something down the road that will become available?
So, so right now, there are a few E V options. I think it's, it's getting the buy-in for like having the infrastructure and, and a combination of, of the two, of the infrastructure and then also the buy-in. I think that's now as the adoption of B Bs is actually is happening on the consumer side. Most likely, you know, we'll start shifting on that side. I think even on the school buses, a lot of folks are not recommending right now because the infrastructure for it, it's not, it's not established. Especially, let's say, we have an athletic, an athletic event at a different county and the bus needs to be charged. And that school district doesn't have the infrastructure to charge it, that it's not, it's not there yet. So I think waiting to establish the infrastructure is a, it's a big piece.
Thank you. Moving on to our student representative report from Ms. Reese Shahado.
Okay, so just first of all, I'm very late on this, but congratulations to the V H S Deca Club for its success at the national competition back in April, April, end of April, April thirtieth in Anaheim, California. So students were recognized for their fundraising efforts, knowledge of stock market in particular, and their presentational skills, especially Katie Eng, who received one of the top thirteen scores worldwide for her presentation in the sports and media marketing competition. Yeah. Congratulations to Farida Sharif, a sophomore at V H S, whose artwork will be featured in the, in the South Orange Performing Arts Center's Inspired Minds Young Artist Exhibition. Farida's super talented. She's public, she's like put her art out last year in the like school literary magazine. So it's awesome to see her getting like that sort of gallery-type setting that they're giving for these kids in the area. And congrats to Riley Ying for winning the N J S I A A Scholar-Athlete Award. The award's presented to students with participation in at least one N J, N J S I A A sport, a minimum of a three-point-oh G P eight. And this is from the website, who exhibits outstanding school and community citizenship. On Saturday, June first, the class of twenty twenty-six will hold a car wash at H B W to fundraise for future events from senior banquet, that sort of thing. And that'll be held from ten to two. And the Verona High School seniors are a week into the capstone program as of right now. And just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Orr and Mr. Hirschman, who've spent the past year preparing the program and making sure that it's a smooth transition and rewarding experience for students and the businesses that are giving them this opportunity. I'm at a, I'm at a immigration law office in Nutley right now. And that's my report.
Thank you, Reese. Does anyone have any questions, comments? As always, thank you, Reese. And moving on to our committee reports, facilities and operations.
I can take facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Excuse me, a bulk of what we have is on the agenda under section D. Couple other highlights of note. We are looking at, we're, excuse me, we are waiting on a proposal for a repair solution on the lower field bleachers. The, the press box project is beginning to take root that will get us through this year. And then we're also looking at, again, at V H S, the artificial turf replacement, both the upper and lower fields. This, as I mentioned, is on the agenda, but we are looking at the replacement of the existing, existing railing for parent and student safety over at Forest Avenue. So more to come on that. And as I said, the rest of it is pretty much on the agenda under section D. I'll pause there.
Anyone have any questions for? Moving on to our athletics committee report. Mr. Walker, would you like me to report out?
You know it.
Thank you. Spring sports is pretty much winding down. However, I just got a report from our A D, Mrs. Palmerisi, that our girls lacrosse team won the quarterfinals. So they beat Mawa, and they will play in the semifinals this Saturday against Glen Rock. So congrats to the, the girls. And girls and boys track team, they will compete at the state sectionals this weekend at Ridge High School. So good luck to them. We have on our agenda also bus drivers. There's going to be a post looking for bus drivers for the next school year with, they obviously require a C D L license. On our agenda also, we discussed possible, it's been brought to us about flag football for girls in the spring. We have to get some numbers on that and circle back about maybe a club team for that and just kind of get the numbers about for that. We are putting out some more signs at the softball baseball field regarding foul balls of where to park and to be cautious of the foul balls that have been smashing windshields. So there's going to be more signage put there. We hosted the Essex County Lacrosse Finals for the boys and girls up at our field. We were the host. We didn't have any teams playing, but we were hosting that. We also hosted the G N T finals. It was Livingston versus Seton Hall. Seton Hall won that. We reported last week about our athletic scholar, Patrick Humon, and Eli, Ellie Battersby. Congrats again to them. And Reese mentioned about Riley Ying. Congratulations to her. And also, our best teammate award was Megan Nguyen. So congratulations to Megan. Sports Boosters Awards is on June fourteenth. And also in discussion was the freshman volleyball, girls volleyball, which is going to be a pay-to-play starting in this, next year. And Mr. Walker, did I leave anything out? Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Real quick, two things, just like for the record, real quick. Congratulations to him for Riley Ying. And number two, for the girls' flag football, is that, is that like an N J S I? Is that like state, or is it just like group?
It is, but it would be for here. There's not many schools that are our size that really participate or have a team. So if, if it ever came out, it would start out as a club program.
The bigger schools are participating for, I think there, Mrs. Palmerisi said there are two, like official.
Yeah, Clifton and.
I don't remember what she said. Montclair, okay.
So it's just in discussion. There's some interest, so. And we also have to worry about our numbers of girls that play other sports that we would, could take away potentially from softball, track.
Because it's spring sport and we're, and we're already hurting in softball. Our numbers are low in softball.
That's the thing, too, like we have, I think, Reese, we have about some more, it's about fifty percent of the females in Verona High School play a spring sport, which is a, which is a great number, right? But there's also, you know, the other half females are either aren't interested in sport or have other things that they want to do. So a flag football team's not going to require just four or five people. It's going to require a whole bunch. So it might just be an issue of we might not have the, the bodies to field a team. Or like the super said, if we do take bodies with other teams, you know, then, then that might, that might prohibit them from, from achieving what they want. So it's the kind of thing where if it did happen, it'd be a cool thing, and why would we not want it? But it, right now, it's just information back gathering stage.
Would there be a potential solution in that, if there's not enough to form a whole team, but and not taking away from the other spring sports to do a joint venture with another like-sized school in the area that might want to participate in that?
I think, you know, Diana or Laura would speak better to, but I don't think, just based on my understanding of this board, I don't think we'd be opposed to exploring that at all. At least, I don't think so.
Thank you. And moving on to finance committee.
I'll take care of it. It's always easy on days that Mr. Cruz reports. So pretty much ditto what Mr. Cruz said. I will say that we do have, there's a couple grants that are in the works for H V A C upgrades. There's some H V A C units on the high school, I believe, that have, that are at the end of their life. And that's really about it because, oh, yeah, no, that's it, because he's covered everything else. So thanks, Jorge.
Thank you. Any other questions? Moving on to public comments on agenda action items only if there's. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped education. Sorry. Back to committee reports. Sorry, Diana, committee, sorry. I was looking right at it, too.
I'll try to be quick. Education meetings are always long. Okay, so just a brief overview. Dr. Miller gave an overview of our academic support program, spoke to some of the A P courses that are being finalized. In total, there were five hundred and sixty-five exams that were administered across twenty-seven courses. If for students who did take the A P exams, you can expect to get the subject score rosters July eighth and then the student data file, scholar reports on July fifteenth. Curriculum writing, as always, is underway and planned for the summer. Next curriculum council meeting will be on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, and available to be streamed for members of the committee. For next year, Dr. Miller is also working on the professional development for the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging goal. We currently are working with Jarra Platello Group. And there will be a group of teachers who will be part of the, the work, and then they will turn key, the work that they do, out to other teachers. We had a little discussion about the unpacking of standards and which standards I think will be worked on. So I, my take was that in the next meeting, I'll probably be able, or will be able to report out on where we fell with that. As far as assessments go, map growth assessments, those are our, our district benchmark assessments for grades one through four will be administered during the week of June third to the seventh, and grades five through eight during June fifth and sixth. N J S L A testing is nearly complete. Possibly not as important for the general public as it was to teachers, but Governor Murphy did sign something into law for a temporary revision to S G O's, which is something that educators are marked on. However, I think an important thing to note there is that any teachers who are in their first year of employment, non-tenured, or without a record of a pre-existing S G O, they'll still be required to do so. So that will be a way for districts to evaluate and kind of follow those teachers. Um, let's see, and, oh, we had, again, we discussed the letters training, which is a. Multi-sensory approach for literacy, we have a group of teachers who have been certified, so we discussed. Kind of determining which teachers have not to see if there's interest in there as well. For a goal of having as many teachers certified as possible. For special education. Child held their end of year social last week, I was not able to attend, I did have something, but. They, child is always so wonderful and, and does so much for the district, so, yeah. So always thank you to them for their work. We discussed also special edit projections for preschool and then also for our ICI, which is in-class inclusion. Last year we, or this year, I'm sorry, we implemented for the, we implemented it for the first time. So moving forward, Ms. Simmons, who's the Director of Special Services, will, you know, we basically will be. Seeing where the needs are and then to based on what the needs of the students are at which school. They'll, you know, continue that ICI, which again is in-class inclusion support. Let's see, ESY is end of school year for students who are eligible, so that will begin Monday. June twenty-fourth and run through Tuesday, June twenty-third. Let's see. Oh, we were selected for the Department of Education Grant Opportunity, it was a dreams project. Which is a mental health, which supports mental health. And then I think that was pretty much it. And then also I just want to make note, we had security on the agenda for committee reports, I had a family emergency yesterday. And could not attend, so we will meet prior to the June eleventh, but I, I apologize and I thank you for. Being flexible, but.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions on education? Now I could go on to public comments on agenda action items only, anything that we are voting on, if you have any comments. Please come to the podium and state your name, we have three minutes. Seeing none, moving on our agenda, we're going to go into discussion items, new business or old business?
One Board President, Commissioner. So Hipster is a HIV data collection instrument, it doesn't prevent HIV, it just collects and warehouses. And stores our data, our contract with Hipster runs out in about a month. I don't want to put words in our superintendent's mouth, but it seems that she is, is not interested in, in keeping Hipster. But that the district principals seem to really like it, again, if that's incorrect, please feel free to refute me.
That's correct.
My opinion is that the anti-bullying rights law. Was made with very beautiful intentions, but it's a very poorly written law, it is mostly a copy and paste of what affirmative action laws. For adults, and since essentially this is a copy and paste of something intended for something else. I don't believe it does as much as it was intended to do to curb incidents of harassment, intimidation and bullying. The Hipster program is, in my view, a. A poor instrument for, for districts to use to track HIV data. I think that perhaps if we were a large district like Newark or Patterson or Clifton, then I could see some merit in using this particular program. But I don't believe that we need this program in Verona, and I think that it actually makes the whole HIV process more confusing and. Therefore, if our superintendent. But she doesn't want to hurt the principal's feelings, then I ask that our board. Consider simply taking this very odd situation to our own hands. And just when this comes up, if and when it comes up on a future agenda, we consider saying no, we don't want to pay for HIV and that settles the problem right then and there. I believe that if we do this, it will benefit both our anti-bullying specialists and our anti-bullying coordinating staff. Even if they don't think it will, because this program. This particular program, in my view, causes more confusion to the HIV process than it does, you know. Prevent it or, or, or provide clarification, with that said. This does not mean that I support bullying, of course, I don't. But what I'm saying is that Hipster is not an answer for Verona, so if this does come on agenda, I just ask that we consider saying no.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, it's really not about feelings, it's about Mike coming in and making a lot of change and making decisions that. Pick your battles, right, so we're doing a lot to make change here. And fighting over Hipster when it's been established in this district for many years and it's what they rely on, I think it's garbage myself, but.
Or hey, if it does come on agenda, could you just give us an alert?
Yes, yes, yes.
Do we have, are there other?
You know, I have to tell you, I don't know, because I never felt the need to, to need to pay for a program to. To monitor something that you can do with. Three-eight form that the state provides us that we have to use and the spreadsheet.
Okay, I was about to ask, what was your experience with it in Kennel Lawn?
Uh, in both Kennel Lawn, well, it wasn't in Livingston when I got there, but I know they, they don't use Hipster. We used. The form that the state provides and before that we had our own form and we managed it with. A spreadsheet.
Experiences that when you, when you're sending these reports to parents, and then these are sensitive and, and whether, and we've been on both sides. Whether my family and then at, at school, I see both sides of it. I, I think the, the Hipster program, it provides an impersonal approach. Whereas I, I think just if the district makes something that is right for them and, and right and as far as how they want to communicate. Important information to parents, I, I think we could create something far better, that, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah. The only benefit to Hipster is that it is a, I think they've had it for twelve years now, it is a database. Rather than a spreadsheet, so searching back to look at, like, repeat offenders. You can do that with a spreadsheet, obviously the database is easier to do that. I think our principals really are afraid to lose that historical data, we can download it into, you know, onto a hard drive and have that.
Is that, is that something though that could be kept through Genesis?
Yes, I don't, I don't know how in Genesis, I think the other appeal for our principals with Hipster is it does send you a reminder that you're. You know, you're coming up on your three days or your ten days, it keeps them on track in terms of the timeline, but. Again, I spent ten years somewhere else not needing that timeline to keep in line.
The solutions are so elementary.
Yeah.
Like they're so elementary. And I just don't see, it's, it's not even a money issue for me, it's just that we, it, it, this is not a, it's, you, your own words were garbage. So that's for me is all we need to hear.
Are there any security issues about going outside of the Hipster environment?
I'm not, by, mean by what?
I mean. In other words, is the data more secure in the Hipster environment as opposed to keeping it on a spreadsheet?
I would trust our internal IT security as opposed to a third-party vendor, to be honest. I'll be, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, and we, we keep other student information on spreadsheets, right, I mean, that's how we keep store data, even if you're, if it's in Genesis. And you pull it out for a state reporter, comes out into a CSV file.
Yeah, yeah. Coming back to, I think Diana, I'm sorry. If it wasn't you, asking about the Genesis opportunity, I mean, overall, we don't use. Genesis to the degree that we could or should be and that is an interesting question to me, what.
We do not, and, and it, there is an HIV portal in Genesis, because we don't use it, I'm not familiar with its functionality. But I can certainly look into that.
Maybe that would be the first thought.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. I just have, I wanted to mention that I attended the Lanning Art Show and I would just like to thank all of our art, art teachers in all of the schools. For all their dedication and work they put into the schools, because. At Lanning, and I'm sure it was like this at all the other elementaries, the hallways, everywhere you go. It's the, the time that they put in. To display all the children's artwork is incredible, so I would like to thank them for all their time and effort for the art shows that they do. And the HBW Spring Concert, I attended the one evening up here for the middle school.
So nice.
Such talented students we have, so congratulations to all those students. And I just wanted to also mention, Diana, if you wanted to report out about attending. Down in Trenton, you went to the delegates assembly on May eighteenth, I tuned in for a little bit online, it was a long one. It was a very long one, but thank you for attending that in Trenton, if you have anything to report on that, that's all I have really for now.
Yeah, it was a, it was, it was a long meeting, a productive one, there were fourteen resolutions that, that were. It was a lot, yeah, fourteen resolutions, I think the most notable ones were the. There was one on pilot programs, which is payment and load taxes, which is something that we've discussed a lot about. Interestingly, I think the, the way that this was worded would not have helped a district like Verona. And it wound up failing for that reason, because each district's needs are so different. However, I think it's really important to note that the fact that this was up for a resolution and the conversation that was being had around pilot. Really does bring light to the fact that there are many, many districts throughout the state that are significantly struggling. Due to. New housing and the way in which the state's formula is impacting funding and the way in which. Districts are either receiving pilot funds or not receiving them, so this is not a Verona problem, this is a statewide problem. And a big issue, so even as a board, I know we've been talking about it a lot, but perhaps it's something that we can even further discuss about. You know, thinking about a resolution, something that we can bring to the table too, to share how it's impacting us. That was one, the other was capital reserves being able to be used for school buses, EV or electric vehicles, so that was interesting. And then there was language over, there was a resolution around changing the language in. Around HIB to include the word intent, so whether a, there was intent for. A HIB claim or not, and I think. It went nowhere, it's going back to the table to, to talk through the language again. There were both, you know, both sides were very. Passionate about whether the language should be in there or not, it's the only, you know, Denise, you know, is better than I. But typically, when Kyle, obviously, right, and legal intent is important, it's not in HIB language at all, so. But again, it was, it was great, but I think those were probably the, the three most notable ones.
The other issue with HIB from a district point of view is if you impose a, a, a suspension, say. For a student, we can impose up to a ten-day suspension. And that's our prerogative, right, a, a parent can appeal that, but. They have to go through a process and, but with HIB, a parent can appeal anything, they can appeal a detention, they can, I, I mean, it's, it doesn't. It's not consistent with other disciplinary procedures in school districts. So there's a lot that, that organizations like NJPSA, NJASA. The, the lead group have been asking the, the legislature to take a look at changing the way that law is written for lots of reasons. But. Something else, but I'll, I'll come back to, oh, there was one thing, if you're done, there's one thing for new business. I met with Mrs. Kieran from, Miss Kieran, Mrs. Kieran from the Borough Clerk, not Borough, Township Clerk. And we were talking about the two new special elections that the governor. Okayed and because we are a district that, that does voting in our schools, that means this opens us up two more times. One of them is July, which while we're not in school, our buildings are used by recreation, by VC. And by potentially, uh, Verona Music and potentially our high impact tutoring grant. So that's problematic and the others went in September. Right, so we're back to school, we're in September, we did it as much as we could this year to have off on June fourth, we gave that day back. We did have, even though it's a tough week in November, we have election day, the general election off. So that, uh, because we know that's going to be a very busy election. One of the things that we talked about is there's an opportunity to move that municipal election to November. And as a school superintendent, if we can do that, and from what I understand from my discussion with Mrs. Kieran, is that's also a savings. A significant savings to the township in terms of monetary, what they have to pay for, if it's just a municipal. Election or if the county's doing most of the printing and it's just our additional.
The same township that has not given us any pilot funding.
Yeah, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars to, to run that election, yeah, well, we wouldn't, I think we'd save somewhere around sixty-nine, because I think it would cost. The, the township about six thousand if we did it in November. And, and I have to be honest, I don't know the arguments for not doing it in November. They, they, right, right, they, right, we're in November, right, right, sorry, then, sorry, sorry, sorry. This, voting in the schools is, is new to me. So I, I don't know the arguments for not moving it to November. I mean, for moving it to, well, no, to not move it to November, so.
Council elections are in May.
Yes.
They could save money if they move.
They move the council elections from May to November.
Right, so we are on the hook for a July election when our kids are in our schools, even though it's not formal school, they're in the school that day. We have a November election that we closed on, and so now we have a two-day week that week because of teacher's convention. Then we have a May election and, which is just for council, so it would be nice if they consolidate that to November. Thank you.
I could just, piggybacking a bit on Diana's. Report a, about the pilot. From the pilot funds from the delegate committee, there has been some, I've seen on some. Boards for school board members, resolutions that have been passed by other school boards, they're, listen, they're without teeth. It, it, it's, it's just basically, but. I think maybe if, it's looking like there's going to be more pilot coming our way. In Verona, there was, there was some talk about. Transforming some areas into areas of need or whatever the designation is legally. It, it might be worth us at some point at least putting it out there. So that if town folks aren't paying attention, maybe they will pay attention a little bit more. And realize that these. Choices by the, by the township council impact us and. Greatly, in, in some respects, and we don't have the funds coming to us. Whether or not students are coming out of whatever eventually is built. The school board funding is predicated on everyone paying into the school board, whether it, whether you have children. Whether you're retired or whether you're a business, everyone is supposed to pay a share to educate the population. It's, it's a choice that was made hundreds of years ago. And by allowing townships to carve out these exceptions that are becoming larger and larger. It's burdening the schools and it's burdening the taxpayers because there are things. That we're going to not be able to afford to pay for anymore, things that your kids love, and I'm gonna throw out the S-word, sports.
Not just that, it's going to force us to potentially redistrict our schools and we know this community loves their neighborhood schools.
Right, and, and even beyond that though, sports, AP tests, like class sizes, all these things. Are impacted by the funds that we receive through tax dollars. So while it may be a resolution without teeth, it might be a resolution that we want to consider putting out there. So that we're not looking like we're just sitting here saying, okay, we'll just not get money anymore. And we have asked for, and Miss Prisco has, has gone to board meetings and we've asked for meetings, we've asked for money, we've asked for. Yeah, we've, we've, for years, we've said, just give us something, anything. And the answer has been now like the sixty-nine thousand dollars, I laugh because I recall a few months ago, we were talking about. You know, if we had received, the per pupil cost of the children that, that attend schools from Hilltop or Hilltop, Hilltop, right? And I think it was right around seventy thousand dollars, so like. You know, they're, they're willing to pay for an election for, electing two people, but. You know, they're not willing to pony up some money for us to educate the children that they're encouraging to come to our communities and. I welcome anyone who wants to come to Verona, I love Verona, I bought two houses, I, I mean, it's, it's a great town, I love that my kids are, are being raised here. And I, I welcome anyone who wants to come to Verona. I love Verona. I bought two houses there. I, I mean, it's, it's a great town. I love that my kids are, are being raised here. But, um, you know, sometimes money is an issue and Mr. Cruz can attest to that. I think probably better than anybody here.
Sorry, didn't intend to interrupt. I think, um, one of the challenges that you hit on, um, is, is a couple fold. The, we have the risk, uh, we look to our friends in Cedar Grove, um, and they get the funds. Where it gets tricky is it's not an apples to apples comparison from Verona into the situation at Cedar Grove that has. So it, it's like you're playing three dimensional Vulcan chess when you're, when you're trying to figure out how, how this works. And, and the, the other problem, and look, we're not going to solve this here, is that the, the pilot money, the pilot program was never really intended for communities like Verona. It, it was, you know, the, the communities in West Essex that are glomming onto it, it was never intended for this, for, for redevelopment. And, um, yet here we are. And so you have these disparate, uh, funding models that, that we're just grappling to keep up with. Um, but to your notion of a resolution, I think what we need to see is a transparency so that we see how that money is flowing and that how the community sees and understands that, how that money is flowing because it is not, um, a like-for-like transaction. Oh, and if I may, I just had two other business things that I wanted to mention. I don't know if they were business per se, but, um, I did also, we already gave, um, a pretty significant shout out to, uh, Mr. Morton. And I, I think I would just be remiss, again, uh, he, he has meant so much to my children. Um, they're both in college, the experiences, they still have a love for music, um, that, that will be ingrained with them. Um, from an academic standpoint, um, study after study just shows how math improvement, uh, is driven by success in music programs. So I, I just, again, thanks to Mr. Morton, uh, and his family for everything they've given to this community. Um, and two other quick nods, uh, to folks in our community. Uh, we mentioned Dr. Uh, Deanna Seo. Uh, his son Christian just graduated this past weekend from West Point. Um, and, uh, Christian was a member of the twenty, class of twenty twenty. And, uh, these students that graduated in twenty twenty, uh, just, you know, from one adversity of, of ending their high school careers, starting their college careers in, uh, the shadow of COVID. Um, I'm just really proud to see that. And, and another shout out, and, and there's so many kids from twenty twenty that are doing well. But, um, a, another Verona grad, uh, who went on to Wes, or excuse me, Wake Forest, Abby Romeo is, uh, working, um, in a reelection campaign, uh, for Senator, uh, Sherrod Brown in Ohio. Um, and again, seeing our students take these high profile opportunities, uh, it just shows that we're doing the right things here. Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Thank you for reporting on that. Appreciate it. Anyone else have anything? Okay, thank you. Uh, correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
We did. You all received it?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to our resolutions. I need a motion, please, to approve personnel resolutions, A one through A twenty.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by.
I'll second.
And Mr. Boone, any discussions? Mr. Cruz.
I'm sorry, just one question. Um, and this is for my education. We have, um, and I saw this in a couple situations throughout, um, where we say salaries will be adjusted when negotiations are complete. Um, what, how, how big of a range do we see from, from those asterisk numbers?
That's a good question, one, uh, we can't really answer yet. So first of all, even, even if we had a, um, an actual, uh, percentage settlement or tentative memorandum of agreement on a settlement, the construction of the salary guide is very complicated. So what happens is, let's say you have fifty million dollars for salaries and you give three percent on that salary. Take that fifty million, multiply it by three percent, that money gets added into that fifty million, and then that gets distributed across. How many columns do we have? Eight? Six? Eight?
Sixteen down.
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen down and eight across. So, and, and it's not just, it's not just that guide. It's also the custodial maintenance guide. It's the, um, power professional guide. It's the administrative assistant guide. So you take that new amount of money and then you have to distribute it across several guides that have multiple columns. So it's really, it's hard to predict.
In addition to stipends.
What's that?
In addition to stipends.
In addition to stipends, i- i- if the increase is also on stipends and coaching, uh, salaries. So it's, uh, it's a moving target.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker? Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Uh, I'm going to recuse myself from A nine and I vote yes on the rest.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our education resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions B one. There's a lot of them. Hold on. To, to B twenty.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Ferrara. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to athletics and co-curricular, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions C one through C four.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Brazil, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mr. Boone, any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our resolutions for facilities, I need a res, uh, motion, please, to approve resolutions D one through D five.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Brazil. Any discussions?
Is this, I, I have one quick question. That D five, is that the railing on the playground at Forest?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions E one through E nine.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Boone, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ferrara, are there any discussions?
I, I have one question. Um, and this is probably getting way into the weeds here. On, on E three, um, with the YMCA of Montclair using the HBW school as a bus stop. I, I have to ask, and so this is more for my education, what, what kind of liability issues are there with the YMCA using that that we need to be aware of?
So we do ask them, uh, to provide their liability insurance. So that's, that is something, uh, we, we do as a facility, um, uh, usage, uh, even though we don't charge them, uh, to, to use the site as a stop.
I recall from when my daughters took that bus, uh, they don't go into the building. It's strictly, they just hang out outside. They need to use the restroom. They actually use the library across the street.
And that was my third question.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Yes, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to governance and policy, I need a motion, please, to approve resolution F one.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Brazil. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazil?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our public comment section. Um, anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, please approach the podium. Once recognized, please state your first and last name for the record. You will have three minutes to address the board. There will be no cross dialogue during this public portion. If there's any questions that can be answered, only the superintendent, board attorney, or board president will respond at the end of all comments. You will be granted one time to speak and there will be a time limit of one hour for public participation. And again, there's, um, there will be no back and forth. Anyone, please, can come to the podium now.
Um, before I begin, I just wanna, I did have a comment on an agenda item. I didn't pop up early enough. Um, an agenda item that was brought up today, so I do have that point. I don't know if I can utilize the opportunity now or if it'll end in my three minutes, but I did have, um, something to say regarding Aaron's law. Um, it was part of your agenda item. Is that correct? Was that an agenda item?
It was just.
Okay, so that'll be part of my public comment then?
Yeah.
I just wanted to note. And then secondly, before I start, um, am I allowed to play audio recording from a previous meeting? For the public, it was a recording that was publicly put on Zoom. Is that something I can play back to the board? Okay. Um, okay. Thank you.
So my name is Gillian Armenti. Um, again, I have four kids in the FM Brown section of, of Verona. So regarding, um, the comments regarding Aaron's law, um, it was approved in, on July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The guidance document you referred to that I was handed today by Charles Miller in my meeting with him was actually released on, uh, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, so over a year ago. So when you make comments that it was just released, I think a year is, is a, a long time that that guidance document had been in place for schools. And it was released by, um, the New Jersey Board of, uh, Boards to the Boards of Education to review and implement. So I just want to note that it's been over a year since it's been available for schools to review and incorporate into their curriculum. Um, and me as, as a person in the private sector, if I took a year to implement something that was law, by law to be mandated, I wouldn't have a job today. So I just wanna, I just want to state that. That's how my career goes. I need to implement things that are mandated by my company much quicker than a year, so that is concerning to me. Um, and just as a person who learned about the allegations in FM Brown, within five days, I was on the phone with Dwayne Dixon, who is the Essex County Coordinator for NJCAP, New Jersey Child Abuse Prevention. I was on the phone with him, learning of opportunities. Right now, there's a free grant available to all schools in New Jersey to provide, uh, resources for schools to implement Aaron's law. So within five days, I was able to accomplish that as a citizen concerned about my children and our students. So I just want to make that clear. Additionally, I know we were talking about the HIB and I know, uh, Mr. Walker, you said, certainly we can change the way we manage HIB, but you don't condone bullying. But I have to say, um, and this is where I wanted to play back some of the comments from, from the last board meeting. Um, it's quite, it's quite concerning to me that, uh, we're all allowed to express our opinions, um, on this forum. But when certain language is used, it is quite concerning. So this type of language being used and then you saying that you don't condone, condone bullying is, is quite surprising.
Our school is sick. Our status is down. Let's stop calling the child names. And if you don't feel safe, close your mouth and go somewhere else. Thank you very much.
The fact that somebody can get on this microphone and tell, tell people to close their mouths and then. So it, it doesn't set the right tone to the community when somebody gets up on the microphone and literally says, if you don't feel safe in our community, you can close your mouth or move or go to private school. Um, Vice President Denise Brazil, you said how much you love this school. I have four children that I want to go through this school district. So I think safety concerns should not be addressed publicly in that manner. And then for a board member to immediately reminisce about the relationship with that commenter does not set a good image for this school district. And the image of this school district is very important right now. So whether you think it's warranted or unwarranted, the image is not right right now.
I'd like the board to know we've been implementing Aaron's law regardless of that document. It was released after we wrote curriculum for the health curriculum. It, more of it will be incorporated this summer. But we have implemented that curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Armenti, for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to get up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Haley Melander. I have two daughters at FM Brown. Um, I want to know what will you do next time a child is abused on school grounds? I'm here because I want better procedures in place to prevent this from happening in the future. I want our schools to take a victim's signs and admissions seriously. I understand it's hard to believe and easier to say this abuse didn't happen. However, training would have taught everyone involved that children do not lie about abuse like this, and it does unfortunately happen in schools. This continued lack of belief, the inaction and subpar approach to abuse is why we are here. I have read the girl's medical records. There are seven to eight professional doctors who have written that she was molested at school. Sadly, there is much more evidence that this did happen. To be defensive and say, and I quote the superintendent and the principal, this rarely happens, is ridiculous and dangerous. It was clear from the very beginning that they didn't take the girl's statement seriously. We need better leadership than that. There has been talk about incentives. What incentives does a six-year-old girl have to come forward with this? What incentive does the family have? Do they want to move out of town? No. Did they want to move to a private school? No. I have seen her cry and panic around my daughters because of her PTSD. She associates old friends with FM Brown and her abuser. My daughters and I have witnessed her PTSD firsthand. The girl's family has to shield her from all of her triggers, which are FM Brown, the pool, the athletic fields, birthday parties, all because there is a chance of seeing her abuser. She was and is completely isolated, so as far as incentives, this family asked for none of this. A year has passed and there has been no solutions from the district. The only thing you said was, we have better cameras now, but we were in the process of putting them in before this case. There has been zero support for all children in this situation. At the last board meeting on May fourteenth, when asked who the school staff should report statements like this to, Ms. Giuseppe said they are to report it to the principal. This is a problem. According to public data, FM Brown did not call the police department the entire school year of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. On January nineteenth, the girl told her teacher a boy touched her down there and her teacher failed to believe her and failed to move her seat. This resulted in her running out of the classroom to go home on January thirty-first, where she went straight to the ER. Her statements from January nineteenth and beyond is supported by medical, medical records that I have seen. The principal didn't, didn't do anything from January nineteenth to March thirtieth, no call to the police, no call to CPS. The school only called CPS retroactively in March after they learned the girl's trauma doctor called. The school then sent a letter out in April to second grade parents only because a few kids were questioned on bathroom policy. No one investigated if the abuse occurred. I encourage everyone to read the claims notice and the hundreds of pages of documents in discovery. I respect our teachers and what they do for our, our children. However, I absolutely expect better leadership. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Melander.
Arizona Kaufman. I have three kids at FM Brown. False public state, statements were made at the last board meeting. The board has done nothing to correct them. I am here going to clarify the misstatements because you let the misinterpretation stand at the last meeting, allowing false information to continue. Last year, a letter was sent to second grade parents stating that there was an incident of inappropriate physical contact between two students in the girls' bathroom at FM Brown. The statement also quote said, neither law enforcement nor child protective authorities have made any findings related to the allegations. This has been misinterpreted by many parents as saying the actual inappropriate contact was investigated and it was not. After the letter was sent, some parents met with Dr. Lanzo and Ms. Di Giuseppe. We asked if the child on child touching had been investigated. They both stated that the only thing that was investigated was FM Brown bathroom and policies and were found to have no issues. Ms. Di Giuseppe clarified this again in an email she sent to the victim's family. She states, quote, "DCPNP investigation of the school's protocols and processes was complete" and that a letter of explanation for that investigation was going out to parents. The words protocols and processes was not even stated in the letter sent to parents. You let parents to falsely believe that the actual incident in the bathroom was investigated. You later noted to only a handful of parents that the letter was only referencing schools' policies and not the inappropriate touching. I would also point out, for people who say that kids lie, adults lie too. Adults also tend to be more calculating and persistent in their lies. Whereas lies told by young children often unravel once the evidence is uncovered. In this case, the victim's statements have told a consistent story and been supported by so much evidence that has been gathered. To share a personal story, my daughter saw the victim have a panic attack in the bathroom when the inappropriate touching was first starting in first grade. Although shocking at the time, we now know the victim thought the accused. Although shocking at the time, we now know the victim thought the accused was coming back into the bathroom to hurt her. In second grade, I would see the victim at dismissal burst out of the main doors and run straight home. She couldn't run fast enough to go home away from the school. Now in her new school, she is back to her calm self. She does not flee the school, and she does not make excuses not to go to school. Do not say that this cannot happen in elementary school. Kids do not lie about sexual abuse. The victim is not lying. Please be brave enough, you and the public, to ask questions to learn the truth.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to come up to the public?
Hi, Laura Siligato. I continue to have a lot of concerns about the lack of seriousness, passion, and the proactive steps that are not being taken to make any change in how the community is being addressed, communicated with, and heard. Today, I have just two comments, just to show you just why I am so frustrated by this. In the last meeting, during the portion of time at the end in which Ms. Giuseppe, you were answering questions that were posed by the community, in response to a question about the protocol on what is the protocol and policy for teachers or staff reporting abuse? You said, and I quote, "sexual abuse of any kind, or any kind of abuse that is reported to the principal." This is not true. My concern is that your statement does not follow the law or the actual adopted policy by the district. So this is an example of why many of us are concerned and feeling distrustful of the administration. The law is that any person who has any suspicion or has been directly told of potential abuse, whether they believe it or not, must report it to the proper authorities immediately. The law for schools specifically states that the teacher or staff do not have to report it to the principal unless that does not interfere with that immediate report to the proper authorities. They can report it to the principal afterwards. They don't have to legally report it to the principal at all, although I think we could probably all agree that's best practice. My issue is that if you can't even accurately report to the community what the policy is in this public forum, I lose all trust that our teachers and staff are being directed and led appropriately in this matter, and that opens them all up to potential consequences. I urge you to review who provides the training on the topic of child abuse to the district staff. And, and please look for a new training provider who has a specialization in this area. I know a few of you need suggestions. Lastly, I urge you all to be aware of how you respond to members of the community in this forum. In the last meeting, I noticed a lot of small differences in how you respond, but it was very evident in showing your bias, those of the community who were full of praise and just in love with our district and community, which in ninety percent of the way, I also am in love with our district and community, but it was, thank you so much for your comments, thank you very much for your comments. And those like me who have some criticisms, have some questions, thank you. It, it's, it's a small difference, but it's a big difference, and it's really, again, just showing how much we're not being heard, we're not being taken seriously, and, and just losing all my trust and faith in your, how, how much you're taking us seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siligato, for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Thank you. All righty, hold on, let me find my notes. The next scheduled public meeting will be held on June 11th of 2024, beginning with confidential session at 6:00 PM, public session at 7:00 PM in the Verona High School Learning Commons. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Boone, seconded by
I'll second.
Mrs. Ferrara. It is 8:25. Are we, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It is 8:25, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.